We're ready to go. All right, please rise for the federal agents.
I've never known that.
Our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Euclid Township Planning Commission meeting, May 4th, 2022. This meeting is held live and on Zoom. We will be discussing various ordinances tonight. The live audience, the Planning Commission will discuss. After that, we'll ask from people in the audience. After that, then we'll ask for the people on Zoom. In the chat box will be displayed. Raise your hand, hit the reaction button, and then you will be called on. And with that, I first, I'd like to thank Tim Bishore for serving on the Planning Commission for many years. He has resigned due to some scheduling conflicts. And with that, I would like, as everyone had a chance to review the minutes.
I have finished. I approve the management. And do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. All right, with that, we can start with Town Center Ordinance Draft. And I'll let Tara present.
As you know, the Hankin Group had gone through the conditional use process for a second town center in Eagleview. One of the conditions of their conditional use decision was that there shall be no more town centers in Eagleview. They did submit a master plan in 2021 that depicted where the town center is, town center two, the residential area, the commercial area, and this ordinance pretty much just solidifies that there will be no more town centers in Eagleview based on that master plan that was submitted.
Is there any potential that there could be another one? Can they, do you think, or are, and are they in, are they in favor of this too? Is Hankin on board with?
It was sent to Hankin last week, and I have not heard a negative response, so.
It's also a condition.
It was also a condition of the conditional use decision.
Okay.
They were aware that it was coming.
Is there a definition of what town center means? Is that, I didn't see it here.
It is right there on 50811, which is the requirement for town center.
Okay.
That's the definition, and then it goes into all of the area and bulk requirements, which are not in this ordinance. We just changed the whole first paragraph.
That's what, that's what allowed them to have more apartment dwellings. Gave them the option to have that, declaring it as a town center gave them the option to have more density.
It gave them the option to have at least two different types of uses.
Uses, sorry. Thank you for helping. Okay.
And this is closing out that loophole, or not a loophole, I'm sorry, just that there's no more town centers
in Euclid Township? In Eagleview.
In Eagleview, okay, I'm sorry.
IDs on it.
Okay.
But they could have as many Eaglefews as they want in Euclid.
Not in this township. Not in this township. There's no space.
Right.
That's good for competition.
Any other comments, questions? I think this is just kind of moving forward with what was already set in place. Anyone in the audience have any comments or questions? Zoom? Okay, I'm gonna want to ask for a vote just to recommend. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, recommendation got our approval. Second is lighting ordinance.
Yes, so this proposed ordinance deals with the regulation of correlated color temperature for LED lighting. The recommendation for the ordinance actually came from Stan Stube, who's our lighting consultant. What we are proposing here is an amendment to section 615.3B3. We added six watt LED to the definition, just because we didn't include LED lights for wattage within there. And then the other section was 615.3C11, which we added that entire section for correlated color temperature. Predominantly, this is for signs, which is where we run into this the most, for wattages to not exceed 3,000 K, which is what has been reviewed and enforced, but now it's just in writing. At the township discretion, we can permit up to 4,000 K sources, if there's good reason for it, but that would be, you know, based on what they're presenting to us at the time.
And this fits the DEP specs, I'm assuming? Or I'm sorry, not DEP, PennDOT?
I don't know if it's from PennDOT. These came from our lighting consultant.
Okay.
So this is what has been enforced. We're just solidifying it.
Okay.
Is it for light pollution, or what is the purpose?
It is so that it doesn't cause like nuisance lighting, and then so you don't have the blinding signage, where some LED sources seem much brighter than others, and there's a difference between the LED and the incandescent lighting, just with the wattage density of it.
So what you're, what's happening is they're usually, Stube is usually recommending this type of lighting, and, and, and the applicant is, is always complying with it typically, as far as I can tell.
They have, yeah, so.
So this is just codifying it into an ordinance.
Yep, a lot of times we get a sign that has like a 5,000 K or 4,000, and then we have to go back to them and tell them, sorry, we only allow 3,000. So this gives it to them upfront without having to do that extra step.
Good, okay.
I was just curious if it was also temporary lighting, like turnpike, all the lighting by the turnpike that's seems to.
I don't believe we have control over turnpike lighting.
Yeah.
Or, but any other township lighting, it would control.
Is this, this is only applicable to township-owned and operated lighting?
No. For any lighting in the township.
Okay, so, so in other words, developer-owned and operated lighting. It's just saying that it needs to meet those, okay?
Yep.
Any other questions?
I guess, I guess I have one other. It doesn't really matter because it's not gonna happen, but it just would be interesting if this, if, if they were able to, in the future, move the incandescent spec out so that you could actually have people using much more efficient lighting and just move to LED and fluorescent. So it seems a little dated to actually have a 40 Y incandescent in there, but I get it. It's not, if it, so if this were township-owned and operated, then I would definitely be like voicing hard, like, really, why are we doing incandescent? But since it's, it's private, they can do whatever they want, unfortunately.
Yes, and it's also for residential.
Right, right.
For like lighting on your house.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, thanks.
But it does not apply to Eagle's side, does it? Like Eagle's side in the wind?
Eagles.
Okay.
Anyone in the audience have any comment on the lighting issue? Anyone online have any questions? So moving forward, this, this ordinance will, will prove it. This is a recommendation from the lighting company, and it'll just help the township have control of what needs to be taken control of. So, are all everybody in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we got a green light on that one. Okay, let's go to landscape ordinance.
Okay, so the township recently brought on a landscape architect at Faircough, and we've been working with him to incorporate and encourage the use of more native plantings within developments, and this ordinance amends section 602.8F of our subdivision and land development ordinance. The sections in here actually pertain to the general landscape requirements, including like the amounts of plantings, the number, the spacing of them. And then there's also a new appendix A7, which is the list of recommended plant species, which we currently already have, but this one now incorporates the native species, which are in bold print.
So, so that was a question, so it is defined, native species is defined somewhere.
Yes, in the appendix A7.
Well, it indicates what are native species there. I don't think, yeah.
I guess my question, this is, is this just for new?
This is for new developments.
New developments.
Would be under the subdivision land development ordinance.
Okay, or anything repurposed, so we'd have to go through the landscaping. Okay.
I can tell you, there's a whole list of them there. I sure don't want to read every one over.
Would local stores be required to only sell these? Or is this really just, not per this ordinance? Okay, so this is just for when we receive, like Dennis asked, new development plans, they are required to have a list of the plants they plan to install, okay?
But is this, there's a, I see recommended list, and then I also see invasive species, so the invasive species are prohibited.
That's a separate ordinance.
Oh, that's a separate order. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think.
Sorry.
That's, this is separate.
I got you. But these are, but these are recommended, not required.
Steve, there is a note in here that says, under this ordinance, you can't install anything that's invasive.
Okay, and then there's a list of invasive that is another ordinance. But this actually, this list of all these actually says recommended, not required, so that means you could actually go outside of this list.
Where's that list on?
The A7 list?
I mean, I don't know. It says recommended, so it doesn't say, you have to pick one of these.
It's under section 2F-1. Applicant shall reference appendix A-7 for recommended plant species.
So then you'd be required to pick one, pick, pick your species from this list, I guess?
But again, we're talking about basically commercial land development. We're not talking about residential homeowners, correct?
Correct.
Not individual homeowners, but like a land development plan for subdivision for residential, yeah.
Residential, right. So that's why they wouldn't be able to restrict what, yeah, I miss people are selling. Because if you wanted to, if I understand right, if I wanted to plant something that's not supposed to be, I still can. It's my, it's my property. Is that correct?
Well, the ordinance also says that no fewer than 75% of shade trees, and then proposed decisions on destroying flowering trees, just going down through that are required to be native species. So it does give them obviously the ability to choose.
I see.
But.
So 75% need to be native species, and this is the, this is the known list of native species.
It's the list of all recommended species with the native being involved, so that they can decipher what they're picking.
It's recommended, I guess, for convenience, but not required that you only pull from that list.
Right, right. That's, that's, I guess, was my question.
Correct. So are you proposing to change the verbiage from recommended to required?
I'm not proposing that. I'm just asking the question.
That's fine.
It, I mean, I would say recommended is a little confusing there, that's all.
Gotcha.
Right?
Yeah, I understand.
But it's a nice list.
It is a long list.
While everybody's looking over the list, anybody in the audience have any comment? While the members of the planning commission are still just redoing. Anybody on Zoom have any? Okay. Give us a couple minutes. Is everybody good with what?
Yes.
I think so.
All righty, I'd like to move forward that we make the recommendation for the landscape ordinance. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wishing, Harris, or recommended? And now we'll go the nuisance and invasive plants ordinance.
Okay, so this ordinance deals with the nuisance invasive plant species. This one is a standalone ordinance, which is not located in our subdivision ordinance or our zoning ordinance. The proposed changes to this ordinance include the overview of the invasive plants. There's actually a list of invasive plants that are broken down into grasses, trees, shrubs, vines, and then prohibited plants like bamboo. There's also a section in here on best management practices and control methods for the invasive species, if you already have them. The ordinance also states that any lawn area that exceeds 12 inches in height is considered a nuisance, which is similar to what our like grass and weeds ordinances today. There is a new section that says that a minimum 10-foot wide lawn area shall be maintained along public walkways and travelways, except where woodland borders the property. This is so that if we're going out to take a look at a property, if somebody complains that, you know, their neighbor's grass is too high, and the neighbor then says, well, it's native garden area, they actually do have to mow around, you know, the sidewalk and everything near the township right of way. There were no other changes to this ordinance pertaining to trees in the right of way or the removal or enforcement.
Who used to police and all this?
We are, Katie.
Usually, or?
It, it, a mix of all of us, myself, the assistant township manager, mostly.
Okay. Yeah, I did circle that minimum 10 feet. I didn't quite understand it. I, I read it, and I just couldn't quite understand it, so if I have a resident, if I have a sidewalk in front of my house and the road sidewalk, do I have to have 10 feet of grass before I have any gardens? Is that what, is that what this means?
No, it's so that you don't just let your lawn go and say that it's native.
Oh, oh.
And meadow.
Oh, I think I understand what you mean now. I see.
You can have a, like a garden of native plantings within your front yard, that's fine, as long as the, you know, the area around it is mowed.
Yeah, it just struck me.
And the actual grass isn't higher than 12 inches.
Yeah, yeah, I get it now. The other thing was, was the original ordinance have, that you could put a lean on property and foreclose? It seemed a little onerous, or a little over the top.
Yes, that was in our original ordinance. We only changed section 1 through 3. We left the remainder of this ordinance the same.
It would be very rare, it's an occasion that we would propose on our own due to weeds and mowing the lawn.
Yeah.
But there, there have been times where, you know, we have the townships going on properties to mow, and we do lean that property for that work.
And you do, you do, you do need to have a bit of a hammer, you know, or something.
A heavy hammer, but it's.
Yeah, it seems, it seems a little harsh, but I, I guess I'm okay with that.
To make sure it can't be under 12 inches and, um.
We're coming for it.
Scott with his ruler.
Basically, I think from what I've seen in the past, that would be like vacant properties that have just not been maintained.
We've had.
You guys have, right, in the past, there have been some residents that have been vacant, and things have grown up, and you, the township has had to go and take care of it.
Right.
Yeah, which is, that's okay. It's.
Would you be able to hold like utility companies accountable with this too?
We've held them in the past too, because we have a lot of, obviously, a lot of pipeline right of ways and.
Cracks.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, and that, that's always the funnest one to deal with, but yeah, we've held, we've held them to that in the past.
Okay.
And Charlie just mentioned that, that we, we had a property that was, that fit in this category, it was on Glendale. It wasn't being maintained, it was, wasn't being lived in, and it was a big pain for the township to keep mowing the grass, so.
It typically starts with a nice letter, and then a conversation, and usually it's just that, you know, solves itself, but there have been issues like your point, where we've had either abandoned properties or owners that don't live in the township.
Okay.
And I was wondering, similar potentially, like remediation resources for people maybe sick or old, may not have the means to maintain it, are there resources for them? Or recommended, recommended resources, I don't know.
I mean, we could certainly, the township has to be a little cautious with, you know, recommending landscapers to some extent, but I mean, I think we would certainly work with a situation like that to not drop the heaviest hammer in here on the.
Yeah.
Get the issue solved first.
Okay. Okay.
Just one of those, there were a few things in here, I, I was surprised when I saw on like burning bush. It's considered nuisance. And butterfly bushes, those, I'm looking at page three. Just seems like those are kind of normal landscaping things. But that was in here before?
No, but a lot of these were not in this ordinance before. This list came from our landscape architect. As a recommended list of plants that were.
Does he like plants?
But like, I, I know, like just right under trees, it's this tree of heaven, obviously, this father, mother, fly issue with the tree of heaven, it's been massive over the last couple of years, and they're very invasive. See one, and soon you'll see dozens.
But you see burning bush all over, I mean, the neighborhoods, you know, it's, are they gonna be required to remove those? Or could they?
No, there, there won't be a requirement to remove them, but in here there is, like I said, best management practices for control of them, if they get like too out of hand, or if neighbors start to complain.
Okay, so how can we tell what was changed, I guess?
Everything.
Well, as you said.
99-1 to 99-3 was all added. The previous ordinance, I believe, only said that barberry bushes were prohibited.
Okay.
Yeah, you have wisteria here. I'm just surprised to see some of these things.
Was this mimicked off of any other local townships by any chance?
That I don't know.
You're not sure? I just, I'm a little shocked also with like putting herbicide applications in here specifically.
Well, this ordinance will need to go to the EAC also prior to the hearing that we have in front of the board, so any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is, that's exactly right. Like, it feels like if you have an ordinance that has, it's this crystal clear about the, you know, this is like a pretty huge list of things that are not allowed anymore, and yet there's nothing in here that says anything about, I mean, the real problem is, is all the pesticides that'll be put in place to control the invasive species, and those are the things that are not. So it would be great to hear what the EAC has to say. Like, I feel like there should be a countermeasure. There should be a limit on what they're, you know, or recommendations on what are some, you know, non.
Yeah, because the terminology in here says use herbicide selectively, so there's.
Right.
When I, even education measure, I don't know how this would, but if you like the butterfly bush, there's, you know, use this instead, right? So there are alternatives to that as far as general look, you know, and what it, you know, how big it gets and tall and the foliage. So I wonder if there's recommendations of like burning bush, which is very popular in the township. Here's an alternative versus, so just an education piece might be helpful or a recommendation, I don't know.
So something like burning bush, it may not be native, but is it actually, or it may be invasive, but is it actually a problem?
No, especially if it's, sorry, especially if it's well maintained. You know, I, I see burning, my neighbors, some of my neighbors have burning bush as a sign of a barrier, but they're well maintained, and.
Yeah, so, so my question is, is this necessary?
Well.
For the township to make this step, if, if, if management and maintenance is the, the thing that needs to be maintained, is it not an overreach to just flat out say you can't install any of this anymore at all?
Well, and also, if, if there's, if this thing is an incentivizer for people to, to, to use more pesticides and more maintenance strategies, because of something that really actually isn't that big of a deal, then we might be doing more harm than good environmentally. I mean, I know, I, I used to have bamboo in my property when I was.
I want to talk about that.
That's invasive, like that's nuts, like you can't control it, and you can't get it out of the ground. But these are just things that need maintenance, right? They need to be controlled and managed.
Some of these, I, I see Japanese stilt grass in there. That takes off. I try to rip out as much of it as I can for my yard every year, and it's a never-ending battle, so that's, but I think that's different, because that, the management of that, I'm trying to do what I can, and I still can't get it under control.
Right, that's, that's what I thought invasive meant.
Right.
I thought invasive meant when you, when, you know, you, there really isn't, without like dumping roundup all over it, there's really not a way to manage it, and that's invasive, and it literally, the bamboo actually moves from a property. I watched it go to the neighbor's property and pop up in their lawn, like that's invasive. But some of these things are just things that like to propagate.
Well, I think the term invasive, as found or as suggested by our landscape architect, I mean, I would, I would suggest that he's right with these being invasive, to what extent is, I guess, reguable. But like, I know the wisteria, the, the two types that are listed on this, there are many different, I don't know what the actual word is for wisteria, I know, I just, it was not explicitly listed on the basis. But I did buy a wisteria bush that was, and I don't believe it was either one of these botanical names.
I'm just suggesting that even if something is technically invasive, if it isn't also problematic, then perhaps it shouldn't be on this list, while other things on this list certainly should be.
And I, I think the point is, like, we see what happened with bamboo.
Yeah.
To some extent, how do we not know that some of these may end up being an issue in the future? But I think the comments here are well, are well taken.
I think the third piece that we're not really talking about is noxious, so invasive nuisance, yes, but the third piece of that, and I hope, would imagine the landscape, landscaper would understand that, so a threat to biodiversity, so perhaps there's a burning bush that kills a, I don't know, a certain insect that's actually good for, or maybe it's good, bad for the honeybees, I have no idea. But I would imagine the noxious piece of it, if it's well maintained, I don't know if this is just for, you know, looks, right? So there's a biodiversity piece here that I'd be interested in understanding more, because it talks about human health and safety, welfare. So that's not like grooming or making your house look nice. I just don't know what that really.
Yeah, I would definitely say like this was. Yeah, I would definitely say like this was drafted by our landscape architect who is the expert on this, I mean, the entire can answer questions to some extent that I'm, I know And stretch the imagination, biologist, so um
Again, just understand this is for like new development, new projects.
Is everybody.
No, I don't think so. This is for the township.
But not, you're not requiring people to rip stuff out of their lawn, so are you?
Well, doesn't say, does it, doesn't, it doesn't specify that.
Other than bamboo. Which does say that.
Does say that, but.
But did it say that before in the previous version?
That's that's.
Not, the only, the only plant discussed in the previous ordinance was the barberry.
Okay, I'm a little.
I only said it because it was also, I believe, a fairly old Amendment or addition to the ordinance.
Sarah, what are the next steps for this ordinance?
Technically, the way I read this is if you have a burning bush.
Oh, it's the last one.
Perhaps in the future, but not.
Time it was updated, um, so.
Not only can't plant.
Sounds like there's a lot of questions and.
They could ask you to.
It does sound like there's a lot of questions, the EAC um Will have this on their agenda at their upcoming meeting for comments, so if we want to bring this back to the planning commission next month, we can do that also.
Yeah, and then we'll be able to see what they say about it.
Okay. That would be awesome. Yeah, I would table this.
Yeah.
Where.
Um, well, can, at at this point, I think that's what I will do, I will um Ask for a recommendation that this gets further investigated. And at the present time, that the members of the planning commission are not in agreeance, agreement with this. With that phrase that way, does.
Can I make two more points just to have them out there for thought?
One is, there's a line in ninety-nine dash two that says avoid fertilizing and liming the soil because putting more nutrients in the soil, all the plants like that. But what does avoid mean and what is a criteria around when you can or can't, it's Kind of vague language, people fertilize their lawns all the time, isn't that not permitted, but it says avoid, not a little sketchy.
Sorry, which one was it?
Page six.
Bottom of page six.
I see, thank you.
And then the other thing I wanted to Note um bamboo. It says where colonies of bamboo exist, they shall be removed. I understand the problems with bamboo, but I also know that there's people who have it, some people who just like moved into their house and it's something that they came into and The next page about removal and notice says that somebody from the township can go by and give them a notice and they have to remove it within ten days. And I'm a little concerned about the logistics of of that, I'm afraid it could be Uh kind of harmful to people if, you know, somebody comes and says, hey, you have to spend some unknown amount of money in ten days or else We're going to do it for you and then bill you and It just feels a little heavy.
Yeah, and if it's a, if it's a thirty by thirty batch of bamboo, you're talking thousands of dollars to remove that.
Right.
That's, it's serious.
Technically, it shouldn't.
Not to mention then reseed and all that, it could be like ten, it could be like five to ten grand to do that.
Yeah, I think maybe we should.
Yep.
So are we, but I think we should make a motion to 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 Not recommend this actually.
Okay.
So I'll move that we don't recommend this ordinance as written.
Okay.
At this time.
I'll second that.
Resubmit.
I was gonna say, I think if if possible, we could rephrase the motion for us to take this back and maybe.
Yeah, yeah, revise and resubmit, revise and resubmit.
Well, yes, revise.
Yep, yeah, yeah. Okay, you want to say that again?
I I move that we um that we recommend that this be reexamined and uh changes made and resubmitted in the future data.
With that.
I'll second the motion.
Everyone.
I.
I agree, I opposed. All right. Motion carries. All right, that was an easy one.
Thanks for letting me finish my thoughts.
If it's on the record, then that way we can hopefully get it worked out ahead of time.
Yeah.
And now we're in the chicken ordinance.
Oh, comments from the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm Tony Dorkin and I live on Landbury and I just wanted to comment that what's in this ordinance is reflecting Uh what's changing in landscape uh practices and blah 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 of things have been there forever, including burning bush and whatever. Um, there's, there's just been a lot of findings that these things do have an impact on the environment, they may be contained in your yard, but they are Uh finding their way into other natural environments like the calorie pair and um basically Eliminating other native and more beneficial species, so in general, um, I'm not saying that all these questions shouldn't be looked at in the details. But this does reflect Uh and this is based on Penn State webinars and things like that that I've been attending, this is based on some changes and evolving Practices around plants and Should be open to the fact that maybe some of the practices that we've been doing forever in our yards uh may need to change. I just pulled out my barberry.
Thank you, I apologize for not getting, um, but I I think the our issue was just the way that um And we think it needs to be reviewed more to be handled a little better with the fines and stuff like that, you know.
Totally agree with that, but I wanted to point out that practices are changing, research is changing, the picture is changing about what we should be doing for Stay sustainability and better environmental practices than we may have been doing for the last Thirty-five years or fifty years in our gardens.
Doesn't mean we were doing the right way, we were just doing, it was good, so, all right, thank you for your comments. Can can I comment on on that?
Okay.
Um, I, first of all, that's awesome, glad that you said that because that makes sense. Tara said that the last time we did this ordinance was in nineteen eighty-five. So clearly, it's been a long time coming and I think it's fabulous that we have this to revisit, I think what I would like to see Is, and you you had a great point, is it'd be great to see an example of what other townships are doing in in an ordinance like this. But I would also like to see, like what you just said is perfect that You know, we need to look at a more holistic look at what are we doing to the to the ecosystem? And one of the things that's missing blatantly from this report Is like what are some, you know, natural and good for biodiversity Control measures, you know, right now, all we see here is actually Manage it the way we've been doing for the last forty or fifty years, so I think this this has the opportunity to be a really important document, but it's missing a lot, that's that's why I feel. That's what, that's what we're, we're moving forward, that's what we agreed on, so, okay, thank you, okay. Now we're going to move to the chicken ordinance.
Okay, we're back. So the last time that you saw the chicken ordinance, uh, we were proposing One acre lot sizes um that you can have six chickens on one acre. Um, and the chicken coop needed to be setback fifty feet from property lines As well as seventy-five feet from an adjacent dwelling that's not Owner occupied, your own occupied um. Made some revisions to the previous ordinance and are now proposing A half acre minimum lot size. Um setbacks for the chicken coop would then be the same setbacks for the designated zoning district Um for accessory dwellings, so similar to a shed setback. Though they would still need to remain seventy-five feet from a neighboring dwelling. This ordinance also proposes that One half acre lot, you can have four chickens and then you can have eight chickens on one acre and then four chickens for each additional half acre. After that, um, but no more than thirty-two chickens. In total. Um. Not much else of the ordinance has changed um from the last proposal um. We would require that Anyone that wanted chickens apply for a zoning permit um Where they would need to fill out a request a plot plan, we would then mark it with the setback requirements for their zoning districts like we do now for a shed. And then they would need to submit A permit with the size and location of the coop on the property, the number of chickens that they're intended to keep. Um, how they're going to deal with the rate, the waste removal um. And then if they have homeowners association, they would need approval from them. Um, most homeowners associations right now have been their restrictive covenants that they Aren't permitted to have chickens. Um, I think that stemmed from the fact that our previous ordinance required four acres minimum, so none of the homeowners associations would have Had a property that had four acres to even have the ability to have chickens um. We did go back and forth with um having the requirement for completing a course online. Um, what we're trying to do now is come up with some sort of Sheet or verbiage on our application that pretty much says that The person that's applying understands these best practices for maintaining chickens on their properties and they would need to initial and sign off on that. Um, or if they did have a copy of a course certification, they could certainly submit it as well um. That is pretty much where we are right now, there are um some size restrictions on chicken coops. Um, then a maximum coop size on a half acre should be fifty square feet And a hundred square feet on a one acre lot, now that's just for the coop and hen house, then there's also another Requirement for the chicken run um Which is not less than four square foot per chicken. But you can't have free range chickens, like they need to be enclosed on your property.
Okay, that's interesting comment, you're not allowed, you're not allowed to let them run loose, they have to be contained in the cage, okay?
Any rooster?
No roosters allowed.
Okay. But is is there any um Option for amendments to this or is this, is this the the recommendation and?
We're here for discussion.
What's the duration of a zoning permit?
Duration, so.
Is it a yearly renewal?
It runs with the property, with the property.
With the property.
Or until the, well, with the property normally, um, I would say if A new owner moved in, they would probably need a new one.
And enforcement? Are you guys are new fishing game?
We can enforce this to make sure that they're compliant with the setbacks and that um.
Because I read it, it says any township zoning officer or police officer, so.
Generally today, um, if there's a noise violation or something when I'm not working, the police are handling that, which is why It says the police or myself.
I think at the summer meeting, there was some volunteers who would potentially do, is that a possibility? There there was an organization who was, you know, presenting some of this education, saying that they would be willing to be You know, um, a team of volunteers that would help in enforce it or.
I believe they're here, but yes, um, I I would actually like to sit down with Kathy and go over some ideas, I mean For the permit, we were also thinking of ha- having handouts um with resources and some common knowledge for homeowners that actually want to have chickens.
Is there an opportunity for neighbors to voice their concerns during the process?
Well.
Not in this.
But I'm asking.
So our ordinance is to be approved, we have to have a public hearing, um, so it's open to the public.
The ordinance gets approved hypothetical and a year from now, somebody's neighbor decides to put in chickens, the neighbor has no You, as long as they meet the ordinance, they're okay, right?
Yeah, you're asking if there's a remedy for the neighbor, right? There's no, not in here.
Like a variance.
Right.
Like a notice.
There's not, I mean, your neighbors don't need a notice today if they're putting a shed on your property.
Right.
They would only get notified if.
Yeah, chickens are. Chicken is not a shit, I mean.
Yeah, but to some extent too, like there's no requirement to notify I'm getting a dog.
Yeah, it's not a dog either, far, you're confusing farm animals with pets, it's just not, not the same. Uh, here's my objection, I'll give you, I'll give you. Uh, I think we should have a minimum one acre. I think we need a setback from the property line included in here, I think you need some remedy for neighbors, for a neighbor to object. And I think you need something more specific about enforcement and the end, like you do with the other one where you you find them or something, you know. Something that's a little heavier than what you have here.
We do have the ability to find them in here. Yep, it's on there, it's on the last page um. Eighty-seven dash six is unfortunate violations of penalties um. So if they don't comply, we can charge up to a thousand dollars.
And I'm assuming you can revoke the permit too, right?
They would need some.
No, but you can revoke it.
They're, they're.
If they're not following it.
If they're not following.
Following it, um, yes, they would need to be brought into compliance, it would be the same as any zoning violation.
Correct, but if there's like multiple issues, you could then revoke the permit and then they wouldn't technically not be allowed to have chickens anymore.
That's actually in here.
That might be a good thing to write in there, like second offense or something, three strikes, you're out.
I think we would want to definitely discuss that with our solicitor.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think I I'd also be interested in what um kind of information or Evidence, if you will, um, of the complainant um is providing in order to Um, claim that there's a nuisance, right, so you could just not want your neighbor to have chickens and say I saw him running around unattended or outside of the thing and is there evidence that that's happening or I just would like to get rid of the chickens frankly?
So if we get a complaint, we're investigating first uh to see if we see anything. A lot of times um they'll send pictures.
Yeah.
You know, we don't see something, but We're definitely investigating before.
We talked about a trial run for maybe a year or two years and see how it worked Before it's totally enacted, I mean, having lived on a farm all my young adult life Excuse me, and had chickens and know how they smell is the biggest objection to them. I just have a problem with this thing, a half acre, four chickens, whatever, they still smell. I I I have a neighbor Who's complaining about the guy next door smoking weed. And they can't open their windows because it stinks and so I went over and confronted them and I said, these people are complaining, they they didn't want to go to them. And these, I said, go in the backyard, and the guy says, well, yeah, then the wind blows the other way to the other people, they don't like it either. The wind blows what the wind blows. How how well are these chickens going to be taken care of, and I see that, you know, you have a garbage can For the litter and and all that good stuff, but I just question the whole shebang, because Euclid Township is no longer a farming community.
I do have a question too for a half acre, so let's just say, I know all plots are different. And if it's, let's just say a square, where does seventy-five feet Pertain, like what's what's a dimension of if a half acre was a square, what what would the dimensions be? Like a seventy-five direct directly in the middle? If you had two neighbors?
It, yeah, I mean, it would have to, whatever seventy-five feet touches your neighbor's house You have to be that far away and if you're not, then you can't have chickens.
Similar to when we look at a property and you have like the area where you can build, like the building envelope, you'll have that area on your property where you can have.
Correct, so what I'm getting at is, so.
Just trying to get a scale of like what is that?
Yeah, so how much room do they, on a half acre lot, do you have to move this chicken coop kind of thing, are you If if it's a half acre, are you, you have like four feet of play kind of thing and that's it?
Well, that's why I was saying, there's no setback from the property line.
There is, there's seventy-five.
There's, if not, so from the property line, the setback is whatever the zoning regulations.
Or so like.
So for an accessory structure, you won't, if it's less than a hundred and twenty square feet, you only need to be ten feet from a rear property line.
Right, so you could have it at the very back of your property, which is seventy five feet and most likely seventy five feet from your neighbor behind you. So it would just be at the back of your property. That's what they're trying to.
Oh, okay.
To accomplish, but.
So how close can it be to somebody's neighboring property?
Seventy five.
That property.
It depends where you live. So if you're, you know, if you're in.
Again, I know each plot's different.
If you're in Marchwood, your side setbacks are fifteen feet. So fifteen feet from a side property, ten feet from the rear property, as long as you're seventy five feet from the dwelling next door. Or any adjacent dwelling. So it kind of depends on. Where your house is situated in relation to your neighbor's houses.
Correct.
Not every house that has a half acre will feasibly be able to put a chicken coop on their property. But the majority of them will.
A half acre square is a hundred and forty four times a hundred and forty four. So that means seventy five, it's, it's pretty much like you said, it's right in the middle.
Yeah, you don't have much room.
Your chicken has to be in your center room or your bathroom.
Correct, understood. I'm just trying to think like, how close is this coop going to be to somebody's next door neighbor? That's all.
So we're trying to make it possible for you to have chickens, but for you to also be respectful of your neighbors to be far enough away.
Exactly.
Whereas the previous ordinance was fifty feet from your property line, which would then directly put it right smack in the middle of your yard. And now you have, you know, some wiggle room as long as you're seventy five feet from your neighbor's house.
I mean, based on that, just the scale of that, it actually does make more sense what you said about an acre. Like at first, when you said that, I thought, well, that seemed, you know, what if somebody is really going to be really good and they like chickens and they have a half acre lot, but. Doing the math on seventy five square feet. If it were square and it's half an acre, it's only a hundred and forty four square in each leg. So actually an acre makes more sense. And it actually kind of, because you're going to have a house on that lot, there's not really that much room. So now all of a sudden, if you put a house in the middle, where are you putting this thing? You know what I mean? An acre gives you a better chance for everybody to be happy and successful.
And I don't believe any of our, any of our neighboring townships have half acre. I think they're all acre.
Upper Euclid's ordinance goes down to point four acres.
Sorry.
And I think what the, with the half acre is, we're going into this knowing like Tara said, that it will not be feasible for some half acre properties to have chickens. Just like it's not feasible for like Tara said, shed placement and things like that.
But you're going to review that then, when they, because I see in the application, it says size and location of the coop on the property. So if it's not even feasible, you're just going to say, sorry. Denied.
And this was, the presentation last summer had examples of ordinances, I think, from other. Other townships. And it was based on, I guess, success of those, right? So some, this was built off of some successful ordinances in non-farming communities, right? Something that's more similar to Euclid versus maybe a farming community.
But when we do any kind of ordinance update, we tend to focus on our neighbors that are of comparable size and, you know, suburban nature.
Right, okay.
So I actually, I've been working on this for years. In twenty sixteen, I had gone through and looked at every municipality, pretty much in Chester County. I did the same thing again this year. Only six. Seven municipalities changed their ordinance. Within that time. A lot of them went from four acres to either one or two acres. One went from twenty acres to one acre. One went from. Three acre, Upper Euclid went from three acres to eighteen thousand square feet. West Bradford went from five acres to one acre.
So we would be the smallest amount.
We would not be the smallest amount.
Eighteen thousand square feet is.
Okay, right, okay.
But most of them are an acre above.
Most of them are an acre, yes.
I guess I would also, I mean. Part of wanting to do this and the reason that it's maybe gaining popularity is. Is there a kind of sustainable nature to this, or is there a reason that this is, should be in theory beneficial? In some way to the township and I'm sure that that's been talked about. Right? So as we talk about either ready for one hundred or like being a sustainable township, is there a reason why we would want to adopt this? I know that that was talked about last summer, but I'm just thinking about as we're.
I think it definitely, when you look at some of the trends in planning and urban planning, that food sustainability is also very important. And we're seeing more things like urban farms and gardens pop up, vertical farms, indoor farms, and this would follow in with that, that, you know. But a half an acre, what was it, four chickens, that, that would be enough for a family to sustain their own foods or egg supply for their family.
That's super helpful. Thank you.
And I mean, those are, you know, potentially no pesticides, no, you know, it's, it's organic farming essentially.
You can see bugs, their, their waste is good for fertilizer, which not the ordinance does have things on that in it, but. It is a sustainable farming practice.
I like the idea of a trial run. I think it'd be worthwhile, which you mentioned. Just because. I, I have no doubt the people putting this in front of us would, are responsible. It's just the bad apples you always get. You know, you give people an inch, they take a mile kind of thing. So it'd be really interesting to see. How many take off if we were to do like a trial of this? And I don't know how that would work with the, you know, the solicitor. Or if you just then pull the ordinance or if the ordinance gets approved kind of thing, so.
Yeah, well, what happened to people who make an investment into it under the trial if it then expires?
Right, yeah.
That's definitely a question for our solicitor. I just turned to Tara and asked how could possibly do a, like a trial run on zoning? Because it does have a lot of issues that come with, you know, homeowners rights and investments with, that come with chickens, coops. But we can certainly discuss that with our solicitor.
If, I mean. If it's approved, couldn't we revisit it in the future? If it becomes a problem and change the ordinance again?
There's always the ability to do that, but there's, I mean, I would imagine that if someone invested, that's a different amount of time, they would be definitely voicing their.
It's like to be grandfathered.
It'd be like the same thing, kind of, or that.
But I think that might be an easier. Thing paperwork wise, which isn't the right phrase, but. Been trying to pass something with an expiration date.
Well, I mean, if they know, if they know that there's a central expiration date, they have to just, you know, be conscious about what they invest. I mean, that's.
That's true too.
Right? They could, they could know clearly that we're looking at this, maybe it might not work out for half acre in a, after a two year assessment. It could move to one acre and then, you know, you're going to be putting your chicken coop on eBay.
Discuss last time that it was presented. I believe Kathy had mentioned it, having, you know, maybe thirty, the first thirty applicants. Do a trial run or something, so. We can discuss that further, I guess, with our solicitor and find out if there's a way to do that legally.
I'd also want to be specific about what we were trialing, right? So if it's like, oh, we get X amount of complaints, you know, I, I would, I'd want to be. Really specific about what it was that we would decide would cancel it, right? So, and then how would we balance that from positive impact? So. Are you measuring how many eggs were delivered upon in that time? And so then the sustainable positive impact? So if we're just measuring the negative, how are we counteracting to say this is a positive thing? So then if we're going to do a trial run, then it needs to be. It has to be both that we're measuring. I don't know how you would count eggs.
Well, basically I think someone would have to take, take the pluses and the minuses, put it together and present it back to, you know, someone.
I have another question. What about, I had, one of my daughters used to live in Rhonda and she had a pretty nice sized backyard. Suppose she wants to have chickens, so she comes to supervisors or looking for a variance or exception, whatever. What happens then?
So this is a standalone ordinance. It's not in our zoning ordinance. We actually are taking it out. Of the zoning ordinance, because currently the requirements for four acres is in the residential zoning under RA, RR and R1.
So there's not going to be the exceptions to.
There would not be an exception.
Okay, thank you.
Plus in Rhonda, they're not a single family dwelling. Detached, so they wouldn't be allowed to have them anyway.
Some, somewhere.
There are some in Rhonda.
A few on this side.
I think it also said in here about homeowners association, so like, we know which ones within the township are.
As of right now, I believe every single homeowners association has in their restrictive covenants that chickens are not permitted. Because none of their houses have four acres. It doesn't mean they won't change their restrictive covenants if we pass an ordinance to allow their residents to do that.
The, the idea of having thirty applicants or kind of capping it for, in, in a sense, that trial run, right? How frequently do you do something like that for an ordinance or for? Wouldn't that be fun? See how that works? I think that, I like that idea for what it's worth.
Yeah, I think we should just consider this as presented, not with a trial period personally.
Yeah, right, okay.
Anybody in the audience have any comments? Would like to please state your name and where you live?
And I would like to say thank you first of all to Tara D'Arno. I'd like to say thank you to the township staff, to the board supervisors and to all of the participants. You all have the pleasure of having me stand up here for about an hour last fall and it was lovely to have this conversation and. Yeah, just to kind of address some of the conversation here again tonight. That, yeah, I had a guest, also a father, Emily, who was, she has actually helped fourteen townships in Houghton, in Jersey. And has something to kind of advise on how townships can make mid men backyard chicken ordinances and. She actually really resonates the idea of a trial run because it's, it makes the township feel more comfortable and it's residents feel more comfortable. And in the fourteen townships she's helped. She's had zero changes to the ordinances and all of the trial runs have done well. So just for updating and quick for you in this conversation. Trial run, you know, if you consider that it works well, it gives residents comfort in the process, it gives chicken owners who are part of that trial. An opportunity to educate residents and kids and, you know, yes, absolutely, sustainability, there's a lot of great moments. I also grew up on farm and I don't mind the smell of farm animals. I also spent seventeen years living in urban Minneapolis where my, it was very urban. My next door neighbors had chick, they had chickens, they had four chickens. There was no smell. They took care of it properly. They had wood pellets. Here, I had wood chips. Here, I would buy wood chips at the McDonald's. On trucking supply, they sell chickens, so it's very, very much a chicken friendly community here. And. Let's see, yeah, a lot of people in Euclid Township want chickens. Well, we, we, there is a lot of residents, we brought over three hundred residents signatures last year as part of all this. And the reason why people want them is not for farm production, people want them for pets, just like dogs. They're actually less of a nuisance than dogs. People want them for, as part of gardening, more sustainability. There's a lot of food supply chain issues going on. You know, read any news article or watched, there's, there's a lot of talk of that. So it just gives residents a piece of cover. Just to have a couple of extra eggs, if you have pets, or just some, a few pets to obviate some. As far as other local support, Tara definitely having to partner with you on making sure that any residents that do want chickens. To have the right support, there is a wonderful Facebook group called Chester County that have chickens. And that is where people typically go to when they need help with, or for any kind of issue. There are also some veterinaries here in Chester County that do. That they do seek chickens if there's an injury or anything like that. So we have already provided that to Tara. And. Let's see, I do think that there are a couple, this, as it is written, I think it's a wonderful step forward, I will say that it still is strict in a couple of ways. One of the things that we did is mention the township and to all of you is a. A common and some right paper study based on the top one hundred US cities, based on population. And they looked, this, Jamie Luege, who works, researched this. Looked at the top of the chicken ordinances for the top US, one hundred US cities and obvious for the recommendation, they actually say. Instead of seventy five feet, based on from distance from the neighboring house, they actually recommend twenty five feet. So I would just encourage you to take a look at the reason why, why are you recommending seventy five feet? Is there a research case? Again, this is a great resource and they recommend twenty five feet. Also, they don't recommend a lot size. They say it's irrelevant because what's most important is that distance from the neighboring home. So. If you have any questions, happy to answer anything. Obviously, a lot of research, very passionate about this. And chicken owners don't want to be nuisanceous. Chicken owners just want to have a couple of extra pets. They want to be helpful. They want to take care of their little babies. They don't want them to roam free and run in the street or get called on by their neighbors. They, you know, I'm sure that if you let chickens serve, they'd want to give a dozen of things out to their neighbors.
I have a question. I still read my lack of still farm paper and I don't pay much attention to the chickens, but there's. A wave of avian flu sweeping across the country as we speak. Is that transmissible to humans? Do you know?
You said you don't, that the studies don't recommend a lot size, but do there is, do they recommend like a cap on number of chickens per lot size?
Yeah, I think that is in here.
Yeah. Cause that would, that seems like that, even with your example of. The chickens that were raised in urban, there, there certainly was some limit to how many chickens there were.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's because in urban settings, obviously.
Right.
This is a really random question, but if they're going to be like pets, but they have to stay within the run. Can you still enjoy them as pets? Like how restrictive is that for the chickens themselves? Is that like? Are they living in cages? Is that like kind of negative for the chickens?
Yeah, the way, so the, the nomenclature is a coop is, is, I don't like, I would call it kid's hen house size. It's really the place where the chickens sleep and lay their eggs. And then the run is the outdoor space and chickens need space to peck at the ground. It's their, it's kind of how they. And then there are, the best practice for preventing rats or foxes from getting in is actually use hardware flock, which is like a really. Thicker by chicken wire and then you have to get under, underground so that, you know, those can't. thicker by chicken wire. And then you have to get under, underground so that, you know, those can't. So really, and I think that that really protects chickens from being, you know, attacked by a fox or, you know, a fox.
Yeah, and burrowing animals. I think there was a requirement that the actual hen house needed to be like eighteen inches off the ground. Laying box and then they can run down to the ground.
Is it typical? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead. You, I think I mentioned this last time. You mentioned that you have a petition that has three hundred signatures on it, Euclid signatures, I think you said. You really don't know that though, because I think that the list that we represented, it didn't, didn't indicate whether they were Euclid residents or not. They could be from anywhere.
That is correct. Yes, as discussed, Tara had indicated, we can use the change.org platform for obtaining signatures due to coronavirus and not knocking on doors. The way that the platform was addressing, they, they captured name or they captured city. But there, that was a little, there were some that signed the petition. I think there's over four hundred fifty signatures. I'm saying around three hundred after going through the list one by one.
But it's still, you really can't make that statement. It's all misleading trying to tell us that you have Euclid residents. You really don't know.
I can't say for that here on public record, no, but I can, I can say we technically have four hundred fifty signatures. I am confident that we have about three hundred residents based on the past year now of working on this. That we have.
Okay.
I was just gonna ask about, since we brought up like predators, do they tend to then stay around the chicken coops? Like, are we gonna have, is there potential for foxes to hang around residential houses now for some reason? I mean, any more than, I guess, having people that have cats out or dogs or anything like that. What was that?
I said, I already have a fox to my yard.
Oh, so do I, but no, he doesn't hang around either.
Good point.
Yeah.
Well, that's a benefit for the guy that doesn't have the chickens.
Yeah.
The foxes in the other guy's, it's in the chicken yard. So that's a, that's a huge benefit.
Oh, okay. I guess I'm looking at the wrong one.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Can you state your name and where you live?
Sure, Dana Murray. First time I've made a petition. I, I want to just, I guess second everything Kathy said. I knew Kathy before this and I found her on a video. You're the one doing this? So, so she goes for stuff. So I came across a, a really fun ad the other day. It says Uncle Sam expects you to keep hens and raised chickens. It says two hens in the backyard for each person in the house will keep the family fresh eggs. Even the smallest backyard has room for a block large enough to supply the house with eggs. The cost of maintaining a block is small, table, kitchen lease provide much of the beef for the hens. An interested child can help care for the two cows as well as for a person. Then it says every backyard in the United States should contribute to its share of bumper property in nineteen ninety. In time of peace, a profitable recreation. In time of war, patriotic duty. That's what the United States Department of Agriculture. So I thought that was kind of interesting because they were encouraging everyone regardless of backyard size. And now we're here arguing to try to gather in our yards and have permission to do the same. So it's just. And I do think that the times have changed. I would never have thought to have chickens. Even five years ago, I'm a mom before a boy, but I home schooled. Also, I didn't think I'd be doing that. I've got a square foot garden going on, boys build the boxes. They're really excited about possibly having chickens. I live in a lot that's point four nine acres. My neighbors all are point four eight or point four nine. So we actually would not be allowed to have chickens in this ordinance. We're not that far off from the half acre. We were all, my neighbors and I all are interested in this. We were all out measuring with like the hundred foot measuring tapes as soon as we saw this. It literally was impossible for any of us to have a coop in our yard, even though we're close to that point five. Based on that, for me to get seventy five feet away from their dwelling and for them to do the same, there was just nowhere for it to be. Except maybe outside my back door, which then of course is not ten feet from my house and I would have wanted there anyway. So I'm just, would encourage you to take into consideration some of Kathy's comments. So that people like me, I'm kind of voicing up for the, all the under half acres in that group in Euclid Township that we might be able to be included here. My father lived in West Ocean for years, had twelve chickens. Didn't have a problem. He was ten feet, I think, ten or fifteen feet off of the property line. And he had a real nice beach too, huge garden. He never had a problem. We ever loved coming over and checking how long he could keep one of that great time. So I think we also have to look to the positive side of it so that we all kind of can partner. Sustainability is super important to me with that, I mean, just on the news, we talked about food shortages. I'm sure you all saw that in Idaho, it was an ice skate. Idaho, Iowa, one of them, five point three million birds were, one case of avian flu, five point three million birds in bird flight. Just a couple of days ago. And we're seeing weird things like that happening everywhere. And I think it would give me, and I know a lot of neighbors pick some ice moving, just another way to help take care of them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Steve.
Yeah, you go ahead. State your name and where you live, please.
Joe Lummel, Cheshire Drive here in Euclid Township. First off, thanks Tara for bringing this forward. Appreciate the work you've been doing. Appreciate some of the representations. Want to echo what these two ladies had to say, a lot of great comments in there. One thing that I did, and I mentioned this in the board of supervisors meeting I attended last month, two months ago, but I called it for you. To get a sense of what's been happening there, they've made their changes in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, I believe, to be a little less restrictive than what Tara recommended here, down to the eighteen thousand square feet. And I asked, okay, what's been going on since then? Wanted to hear what has happened. And they said minimal complaints. Like it's, it's more, more of the same. They had a more restrictive chicken ordinance prior, made it less restrictive, said nothing's changed. They actually said, I asked, what would you change if you could do it again? And they said, I would probably simplify it and make it even less restrictive. Because some of the challenges they faced with some of the zoning components they added to the expectations we're here to do. So I think that goes to say, hey, our brothers and sisters over in Upper Euclid, they made a change. We have their feedback. We have their insights. For the sake of allowing governments to work more efficiently and more effectively. Copy paste. We do it in our documents. You can do it here. So I think like, let's do a bold aim to be better and work better. And knowing that they haven't had any complaints, that should be reassuring. That should be comforting. The demographics are a tad different, but close enough that I think we can make an educated decision. So again, thanks Tara for the effort. I'm not saying we should copy paste because enough things is great. But let's be cautious of overregulation and overreach when it comes to the people. Because we the people are what this government is for. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Nope, thank you.
How it's going in Upper Euclid was actually something I wanted to ask Tara if you've looked into or heard from, because you mentioned them before.
I did. I actually called them also just to find out how they thought it was going with their ordinance and the number of complaints that they received. And they did agree that it was minimal, mostly because somebody ended up with a rooster and they didn't know until it was a rooster.
See that?
That could be a problem in any situation here, so.
And what, what does their ordinance say about the acreage and the offset?
Theirs is eighteen thousand square feet.
And, and we talk a lot about like the complaints, you know, what have the complaints been? What have the problems been? But I'd be interested to hear the positives from the residents and what they feel like have been the benefits. Why should we feel like, it's, you know, instead of taking this risk, why should we do this? I want to hear more frankly about, you know, the, the food stability, I think is important to hear about, the sustainability. And, you know, I think we, we think a lot about obviously risk and things like that, but I think we equally need to understand why it's beneficial for the township and the residents to do it.
Yeah, and there, and food shortage, the food supply thing makes this feel a little uncomfortable for me to be saying, okay, well, somebody who can afford an acre in this township should be able to grow chickens and anybody else shouldn't. That just doesn't feel good. Feels kind of strange for public ordinance. So that's why I'm kind of wondering like, what are they doing? Is there, could an offset? But I definitely think you got to limit the number of chickens per acreage, but it does seem like, it just doesn't feel right to be saying you got to have an acre to be able to have chickens.
So Upper Euclid, they do theirs by zoning district and by lot size and the number of chickens, which I think their, their issues were having both the zoning district and the lot size because they don't always match up. But a two acre lot could have ten chickens. A one acre lot can have eight chickens. Thirty thousand square foot lot can have six. Twenty two thousand square foot can have four. Eighteen thousand square foot can have three chickens.
So that's like eighteen thousand, like four point five or something like that.
So was there, in your research, five years since two thousand sixteen, looking at Upper Euclid, was there a reason? Were the, were there reasons why you were like, I don't want to copy and paste this because, because you've done a lot, spent a lot of time on it?
So just from all of the research that I have done and going, just trying to get a consensus of what everyone's doing. I mean, there, yes, on the lower side, but then there's also ones that are on the higher side. The county actually had put out the one acre as a guideline for municipalities in Chester counties, which is kind of what we went by the first time. But again, if you look at all of, you know, the counties in Chester or the municipalities in Chester, the majority of them are at one acre.
How long ago did the, did the county recommend that?
I don't know what the date was on there.
I know, again.
I mean, I've gone to classes that they have presented probably within the past five years on backyard chickens.
I didn't know if like, I don't know, you know, times have changed almost like the native plants, you know, this, if it was changing.
I believe just with a quick internet search that it's from twenty seventeen.
And did Upper Euclid do a trial or anything like that, or was it just straight to a passing ordinance?
I think they just passed the ordinance.
Two quick thoughts. The one thought I had about trying to wait to implement a trial is instead of going all the way to a half acre, we could go to one acre or two acres and then change it again in the future if everything's going well. So that's our control. Just throwing it out there. My one question, maybe this is more for the audience, is how long do chickens live? Like, what's the lifespan of a chicken? In general, ballpark it.
I don't know. The, the lifespan in my farm was short because we used to.
That was, that was actually.
Farm to table. Table.
I know that you talk about them as being pets. I, my interest would be, because I like, I, I know in here it talks about not being able to slaughter them, but what is the options for then slaughtering them if you choose to go that route? Is there places you can go to do that or you just do it without Tara finding out? To me, my interest in this would be to have chickens to eat, not eggs. I don't eat eggs. But I was just sort of wondering if what the lifespan was. You're gonna have to replace them in five years anyways.
Yeah, I think the whole slaughtering part is to not have, you know, a slaughterhouse on your property.
Yeah, I, I've done that before. I'm a boy scout. I've done that, I'm a merit badge. Somewhere. Yeah. But, but, but I would throw it out there that if we, if we are concerned about trying to do some kind of trial, once we implement this, it's going to be difficult to go back. And I, I agree. I think it probably will work if we get to a lower acreage. It sounds like Upper Euclid is having success. Perhaps we consider going down to like one or two acre to see how it works and then change it again in, in a year or two. Just a thought. I'm not suggesting that we go there.
It's at one now, right? Or half?
So, right now, the, the ordinance in front of you is at a half acre. So I wouldn't suggest going lower than that for the trial at this point. I mean, I think we've put enough restrictions on it to try to allow people the ability to have residential chickens, backyard chickens at a half acre to see how it works. We can always change the ordinance to go lower in the future if there doesn't appear to be an issue with the half acre.
What would be the difference of between passing an ordinance and doing a trial? Is it the same thing in the end? Like, we could just amend the ordinance at any point in time?
You can amend an ordinance anytime. I think we would need to talk with our solicitor just to find out if we need to incorporate something into this ordinance that says there shall be a trial run for the first, you know, thirty residents. And then the enactment of the full ordinance doesn't take place for one or two years. I don't know how that works, but that would probably be an option.
If, if we would do a trial run with thirty residents, how would we pick thirty residents if there's several hundred interested people?
First come, first served.
Okay.
I think that'd be a fantastic measure of the interest in the community. If you've got three hundred applicants, well, then we have a bit of our answer as far as the community support. So I think that'd be very interesting.
And, and for what it's worth, that's a whole lot more thorough than a survey.
Right. No, exactly.
Full on, yeah, that would really prove it.
Exactly.
Any other comments from the audience or from Zoom?
Sorry, one, one last thing. When you say be cautious with the, just continuing to extend this right with the pilot, like there's just this kind of temptation. Let's see, let's see, let's see, Tara, how long has this been, this conversation been happening?
Twenty fifteen, I think it started.
And, and I want to thank Tara for all the work that she's done all these years. But as you can tell, we have a, a broad stand of people, a lot of different opinions. And our objective is the residence of Euclid Township. And I'm not saying yours is good or bad. It's we have to think of everyone overall.
So.
I have one point I want to make.
Okay.
Just something I noticed in, I think it's eighty seven dash four about structures, things like that. It says that the maximum area per chicken, for chicken coops or hen houses is if you have an acre lot, a hundred square feet. And then the minimum area per chicken run or pen, you need not less than four square feet per chicken. If you can have a maximum of thirty two chickens, that's a hundred and twenty eight square feet for the pen and the run. So then if you add on a hundred and twenty eight for the coop, you're two hundred and twenty eight. Line G says the maximum total area of chicken coop and run is two hundred. No more.
Right. So the chicken, the chicken coop or the hen house is just where they're sleeping or roosting. And then the run is the rest of the enclosure. So we put a, a maximum coop size on the, on the coop, but a minimum on the run.
But.
Then a maximum total, two hundred square feet is, is pretty large.
Yeah.
Like most sheds are. Like most sheds are a hundred and twenty square feet. So I wouldn't anticipate a chicken, like a full on chicken coop and run total to be more than two hundred square feet.
You'd have to get up into the thirties or high twenties of chickens to get there, I think.
Right, so.
I'm just saying, but, but the wording of that, I think we're over two hundred.
You're still capped, right, you're capped at your chickens at thirty two max, depending on your acreage anyway. It's too late to do math. I did have it all figured out at one point.
Okay, maybe I got it wrong.
If you just, if we push this for another three years, you'll hit your ten year anniversary on this.
Do we have any other discussions? And then I guess we need to kind of figure out Tara, how you want to try to approach this, since this isn't an official vote. It's just a discussion for recommendation. You do have a broad variety of opinions up here. Do you want us to take a vote on what you have in front of you, or do you want to take what was discussed and move forward to the supervisors?
I think it's up to you guys. We want to make a vote to recommend it as is, or if you want to have another discussion on it. If we, after we talk to our solicitor, find out the legalities of a trial run and having that incorporated somehow, we can always bring it back next month.
Opinion from everyone on the board, would we like to go forward with that? Talk to the solicitor, let it go forward another month. I don't want to be talking about chickens for another month, but if it's the right way of handling this, I think it would be a good idea.
My, my opinion is I think the trial is the wrong way to go. I think we should do it, but I don't know if going all the way to a half acre yet is the right approach.
Right.
So for me, I would be comfortable going down to an acre. That's what the county recommends. Put it in place, see how it goes. If we find out that it's working well, we can always reduce it to point four seven. Is that good?
I know, and see, but everybody on this.
That's why I'm sharing my opinion. I don't, to me, going to the trial, going back to the solicitor is just going to add more overhead, more time. I think, I think it's clear that there's success in doing this.
Right.
I personally wouldn't want my neighbor to have them, but I understand why people would want them. And so to me, I'd be comfortable going to an acre and putting it in place and then.
But that's not what, that's not what in front of us to.
Yeah. You had a vote on what we have in front of us. I, well, you could, but, but I agree with Greg. I don't, I don't think we ought to do a trial. Other opinions on the trial period? You thought it was a good idea?
I'm all for a trial.
Okay, so we have two for, two against.
I think a trial's a good idea. It just helps control just a little bit, just to see how it is. You don't have to do one year, two years. You can cap it at six months, three months. It doesn't matter. Just, it, it, it allows to see how the residents react to something.
See how the chickens are taken care of.
That's, that's what I'm getting. I have no doubt the people here that are speaking on behalf of the chickens are going to do the right thing and follow the protocols.
You're talking thirty people in, in.
It could be a hundred people.
Change, you know, I'm delayed at work. I can't take chickens tonight. Tell the kids to go, go. So the kid leaves the lid off the trash can, who knows?
We have that problem with people and, and, and their own children, so that's not going away. We're human beings and we, we neglect things that are important all the time.
What's your opinion on the trial?
My opinion is I'd like to see the trial with thirty people and a mix of, you know, from point four to to one acre. That way we can see, but what it looks like, does it perform better at one acre than some of the smaller lots?
I mean, I'm not sure about a trial because it's not been done, right? So like spending time and money with the solicitor, I, I, for me, I'd take this as, as written and, and then see, can we, you know, I, I don't know the process of pulling an ordinance and what that requires, but consider this just a trial run. And then we stop it if it's terrible. But I, I, I'm also talking, and I think Steve brought up a great point about the folks who may be food insecure at half an acre. If you've got an acre, you know, potentially in Euclid Township, you may not be as food insecure. So you may, that may be more of a pet thing where people may be looking for, you know, impact to their living expenses.
But trial or no trial?
I think so.
Well, we just did that and that's got us nowhere.
What, what I would suggest is why don't you let us go, we will try and limit the amount of time we're talking to our solicitor about this so that there's no overhead. But why don't we go back and have a conversation with them and see what a trial could look like? We know, you know, Kathy's mentioned other municipalities have done something similar, so we can have a conversation and maybe bring it back at the next.
Revisit some other options. Okay.
Would you be okay with a half acre as this is written if we incorporate a trial?
Is it okay if we just take a poll? I mean, this is unofficial.
Yeah.
Come on down the line. One acre, half acre?
Half acre, but I'd suggest not needing a trial. I didn't say that before.
Right.
As I look at Euclid.
For me, I said an acre. I, I mean, I think it'll work at a half acre, but I was using that as an opportunity.
I'm good at half acre with a trial.
Okay.
Acres, no trial.
Acre.
I just say trial. I don't think the size matters. I think it's distance.
Well, oh, distance instead of.
Just half acre.
Okay, there you go. I, I would say half acre trial.
I'm half acre.
Okay, there you got a consensus from the board of what we feel. Okay. There was nobody on Zoom that had any opinion, was there? I thought I asked, but I want to make sure.
If there, if there is anybody on Zoom right now that has a comment, please raise your hand. It would probably be. There's, there's no comments.
Okay, so with that, that closes out our business. I do not, Tara, I do not have the announcements for this month. Do you have them, please? I apologize that I don't have that in front of me.
Do we have to make a motion to table this? Do we have to make a motion to table this?
I don't, I mean.
I don't actually have that in front of me. The board meeting is Monday night.
Okay. And with that.
I moved to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
A second.
I have a second. All in favor? Thank you, everyone, for coming out. We appreciate everybody's work and opinion.